Okay, we would like to call this meeting to order for the 2018-19 proposed budget. And excuse Mr. Christensen, who is at a scout camp with a bunch of young scouts. And we will also excuse Mr. Lerman, who will be a few minutes late. So we will turn the time over to Kevin Sullivan. And this is the study session for the proposed 2018-19 budget.
Good afternoon, Ms. Phillips, Superintendent Whitney, and members of the board. My goal today is to provide an overview of the proposed budget for 2018-19. This budget is for the district's fiscal year, which starts September 1, 2018, and finishes August 31 of 2019. I'll be focusing more on the general fund, as this is where the majority of the dollars for the district plans to spend next year. I will also cover the other budget funds, highlighting significant changes along the way, and invite your questions as we go through this presentation. If I can't answer your questions, Jody Hockaday is here, the district's finance supervisor is here to assist me. Actually, I told her she was going to give the presentation. She just laughed. So I want to cover the legal requirements and the roles of the budget. The legal requirements and the major emphasis on government budgeting is to set a spending limit for the district. This demonstrates the available resources to be used to pay for that spending. The district adoption process is a public process that has very specific rules by making the budget available to the public, advertising, and a public hearing. Internal controls, the budget does not sit on a shelf. It is monitored during the year to the actual results against the expectations contained in the budget. It's kind of an early warning stage for us that protects the public assets. The financial plan is the resources. As resources are scarce, the budget is a plan that prioritizes those resources. In Pasco's case, it advances the outrageous outcomes. It's been discussed in the past about the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFPA, framework, and the best practices of school district budgeting. The leadership team has really made an effort to align their financial planning around the outrageous outcomes. There are five different funds per state law, major funds, and they each operate separate in accounting and reporting entities. Each fund has certain resources that it's responsible for, and each fund is restricted in the way that the type of expenditures it can make. The first fund is the general fund. It pays for normal and reoccurring operating expenses in the school district. The capital projects fund is a long-lived capital improvements, primary for construction but not for operations. The debt service fund is the fund used to repay the bond and interest payments that come due that the district has set forth to be repaid each year. The ASB fund, which is the extracurricular activities, which is student-raised money, they control the expenditures with an advisor. And then the transportation vehicle fund, which is for buses and other transportation So here is all five budgets listed for a total of $320 million. I'll go down kind of the revenue or the general fund column, and each fund has the same theory behind it. Revenues for the general fund are $257 million, which is about 12.8% more than the current fiscal year, with the total resources including the fund balance of $278 million. The expenditures for next year, there's also $257 million as well, aligning with the revenue, which will leave us a projected fund balance on August 31 of 20.9 million. This works the same way for each fund as we go through. I talked about the legal compliance, but the highlighted row is the expenditure spending limit for each fund, and this will be the number that the board will be approving in August of, August 14 at the board resolution. So the general fund guidelines, as we've gone through, the board of directors has established a long-running record of fiscal responsibility that is born out of successful financial and compliance audits and the recent achievement of maintaining the district's highest bond rating ever. So this is the second year in a row that we've been able to maintain that bond rating. The proposed budget continues to adhere to these principles. The principles are, the three major principles are conservative revenue forecasting for both revenue expenditures, being realistic but falling on the cautious side so we don't overextend. Ongoing expenditures should be funded by ongoing revenue. This is part of the GFPA best practices. So don't borrow from the future to pay for your current operating needs. And then the fund balance management. This is a way to plan for costs that are expected to occur at the end of the fiscal year, so in future fiscal years. So with the general fund, the expected revenue for the general fund is up $25.7 million, which is 12.8% in comparison to last year, compared to last year. As a point of reference, last year's increase over 2016 and '17 was 11.8%. There are kind of, it's one story with two different parts to this. The first part is the state and local levy. The funding is up $15.1 million. That's the increase in the apportionment, and it's, a big part of that is due to salaries and benefits. In addition, there's the K3 class size enhancement. Usually, this enhancement is prorated based upon how close we are to the K-fund ratio. The compliance is 17 students to one teacher for the 18-19 school year. That's not, that will not be enforced this year, but it is to return to be enforced in 19-20 school year. And then the second part is the state funding that we have roughly $10 million of additional revenue coming in that is program-specific. As you can see, special education is receiving roughly $5 million. LAP is receiving $1.8 million. Bilingual is $1.6 million. LAP is to provide learning assistance to students who are deficient in basic skills. The transition bilingual is financial assistance programs to help meet the extra expenditures for education of students whose primary language is not English. And so that kind of highlights some of, gives you some of the idea of where some of the program dollars are going, and the expenditures follow the revenue as a expenditure line. So the general fund by source, so looking at it in this view, we're looking at it by where the revenue is coming from compared to last year. As I mentioned, this most significant increase is in the state and federal grants, which makes up 84% of our revenue for next year. Local levy, which showed a significant decrease this year of $7.5 million. That's due to the McCleary decision and the new state funding model that they put in place this year. Revenue from other districts are up. That reflects the Pasco serving as the fiscal agent for Delta, and then other sources are areas that are not provided anywhere else within the government budget. So the, next is the expenditures. Salaries, salaries and benefits that include salary increases, retirement increases, healthcare costs, and then normal salary progression and new teaching positions increased roughly $13 million. The targeted revenue I mentioned earlier, the special programs are $10 million, and the expenditures are aligned with those revenues that were increased. And overall, the board is approving the expenditures for the district, not the revenue that comes in, but what is, what we can spend. So this is changes in the fund balance. As you'll see, the revenue, ongoing revenue and the ongoing expenditures are aligned with each other, and this is part of the budget principle for the GFPA best practices to ensure that your revenues do not exceed your expenditures, which is good news for us. Next year, we don't have on the horizon any one-time expenditures planned at this point in time that will reduce the fund balance, and so our fund balance projection will be the, is projected to be the same at the end of August 2018 as it will be in August of So this is a look of expenditures by program, just kind of a different look of the dollars that are being budgeted for the program activity. The basic and special education increased by $16.4 million. The CTE and state programs, that increased by $4.7 million. And then federal programs were, also saw an increase of $2.8 million in comparison to last year. District-wide support has increased along with nutrition services and transportation. So beginning in the 2016-17 budget year, the districts were required to show that they are using the state apportionment for the material supplies and operating costs, MSOCs, for the purposes for which they are funded, the funding is to be intended. And so as you can see, that again, we are demonstrating that our expenditures for MSOCs are greater than what is being allocated by the state for 2018-2019 fiscal year. The, our estimated fund balance at the end of the year, as I stated, we're projecting a $20.9 million fund balance. We manage the fund balance by meeting the 5% reserve that has been set forth by the board, which is roughly $12.8 million of revenue for this year, and then an additional $8 million of fund balance that has been assigned for district position. The assigned amount shown reflect the district priorities, and we focus on our operations on the outrageous outcomes. Most of the items that are sustained for investments for bigger ticket items that eventually will need to replace, like curriculum materials, computers, and bus replacements, those are bigger cost items that will take multiple years to have enough money to fund it. So next, moving on to the capital projects fund as a reminder, the capital projects fund is used for capital expenditures, for construction or remodeling capital facilities or acquiring property. So beginning, the beginning fund balance is going to be roughly $109 million. This includes the recent sale of the bond in February, thank you, in February of this last year. We have roughly revenue of $18.9 million that we'll be receiving this year with expenditures of over $40 million, which will leave us a fund balance at the end of the year of $87,000, I'm sorry, $87 million. We will start the construction of Elementary 16 hopefully this year, based on board approval of the bid. And then also the line item, sale of properties as a placeholder. It does not necessarily, isn't the price for a particular piece of land, but it is just a placeholder for us. So this is the expenditure, the breakdown of the $40.9 million that I showed in the previous slide of the expenditures. So for the 2017 bond, we'll be starting Elementary 16 construction, as well as some beginning phases of '17, as well as middle school replacement. These are costs that we've put in to allow us to move forward on these projects. And again, land purchase is just a placeholder for us. It's not a specific piece of land. Next is the debt service fund. This source is for property taxes for the approved bond measures that we have approved in the past, most recently the one in February. The property taxes are collected by the county, and the county pays for the principal and interest payments when they are due in May and December of each year, leaving us an estimated fund balance of $5.7 million for next year. Next, looking at the ASB fund. This is, this fund is based on fundraising activities, concession, and clubs, and athletics, and then in turn is spent on a number of student items through student direction with an adult advisor. I don't know if either one of you have the opportunity to work with the ASB funds at your schools or not, but the direction is given from the students, not the adults. Transportation vehicle fund, next year, we will receive about $10,000 more in state depreciation allocation with the combined fund balance and our line items of expenditures. We'll have an ending fund balance of almost $1.5 million. This includes looking at an option of a potential yearly lease or purchase of 15 bus replacements. Randy, I think, has shared in the past, we've applied for an EPA grant that will help pay for some of these, some of the buses, and we're trying to understand the state process versus a lease process that will probably be presented at another time. And then the ending fund balance is $1.5 million.
Kevin, can I ask you to move the microphone up a bit, or can you turn up the microphone? I'm having, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
That's because I talk quiet when I get nervous.
Unlike, unlike the rest of us who have our playground voice.
That's a kindergarten voice.
Yes.
$500,000 for 15 buses?
It's a, it would be a lease program, so it wouldn't be all in one year. And so it's a, it's a placeholder at the moment that allows us to look at the different options, and so.
Have we leased in the past?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay.
But there is a state program that is being looked into that does do leasing, as the state funds it, and we pay the lease back.
Well, 15 buses usually is like a $30 million price tag, or $15 million.
So we just found out recently of our eligibility for the program. Randy's done a couple of different communications with the board. We'll be bringing a deeper report to you in the early fall. This in the budget allows you, allows us to take advantage of that program should the board give us that direction. So it's just, you're approving the expenditure authority should we choose to do the program. By approving the budget with this in it, you're not necessarily approving that we participate in the program.
Right.
But if you, if we don't do it this way, we would have to bring back a budget extension at a later date if we chose to. So it's just an efficiency piece.
Okay.
But in no way precludes the board from saying we would prefer not to participate. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
And a bus usually costs, what, $100,000? Because I know I misspoke before.
That's about $1.25.
$1.25, $1.30. Okay, okay, great.
So kind of in a summary, the general fund, there is an increase in state resources. Most of this increase, the fund has been targeted to salary and benefits or special programs, including special ed, LAP, and CTE. Very little changes of funding in non-salary items. The proposed budget is in line with the principles established over the years by the board. It uses conservative estimations, balances ongoing expenditures with ongoing revenues, maintains a 5% revenue of reserve through the use of the fund balance assignment, and plans for future replacements of other expected costs. And then this is, again, shows all the funds on one page, starting with the general fund. As I talk, the highlighted call, or the highlighted row is the spending limits that the board approves, not the revenue that is received for each of the funds that will be given to you in the August 14 board meeting. You had me raise the microphone. I'm standing back. I don't know if you noticed that. So the four-year forecast enrollment projection, this last legislative session, the school districts are now required to have a four-year forecast enrollment projection. We have looked at the needs of the district over the next four years and took into account the following, that we would look at a half a percent enrollment growth. This projection is different than what we would use for a facility. It's more for operations, so it is a lower number. Revenue that OSPI has forecasted in their forecast for us, increase the salary and benefits by what OSPI gave the IPD over the next three years. This also includes opening a new Elementary School 16, Elementary School 17, and new Middle School Number 4.
What was the, can you say that again on the salary? Increase the salary by?
The IPD.
What does that mean?
That's the, they.
Implicit, implicit price deflator, but it's actually an increase, which I think makes it an odd title for it, right? The implicit price deflator. So it's a 1.9 to 2% over the next three years, has already been identified.
Yeah. And I apologize if I missed it. On our first-year forecast that you looked at, is that salary includes some kind of, or the salary portion includes some kind of, is it 2% or is it more than that?
So the next steps is the public notice of hearing and adoption. That will be put in the paper on July 31 and August 7. The budget will be posted on the website by the 31st of August, and then looking at a budget hearing and adoption on August 14. By state law, we're required to have the budget adopted by August 31, so this gives us plenty of time to get it adopted and submitted. So I want to thank you for your time. The budget in its nature is complex and full of details. It is a necessity with a very high-level view of a lot of small details. I've tried to give you a sense of where there are some significant changes and things that are still on the horizon. Given the complexity, I'd like to frame the last question this way. What else or other information would you like to help, to help you understand this year's proposed budget? I want you to have a comfort level in understanding the large picture of this year's budget. If there's any additional questions that we can answer.
Thank you, Kevin. Are we going to look at the four-year budget that you sent us altogether?
I didn't put it in the presentation, but I emailed it to everybody.
And I didn't, I didn't ask you this earlier today, sorry, but on the, where we have negatives on the general fund, what's the plan for taking care of that?
So each year, we will be required to balance that budget. And so the legislators have asked for a forecast, and so we have put together a forecast for the legislators that have said, based on current funding and with what we know we have today, here is our budget. A normal budget process starts in January and takes roughly six months for the district administrators and everybody to go through and reconcile their budget. And so when we hit 2019-20, we will do that same process again, using GFPA principles and the guidelines that have been set forth to do that again. And so this to the legislators is a reminder to them that although they have said they have fully funded education, we are one of many districts that are saying, we're not quite getting enough money that you said you're fully funding.
So what Kevin just described was the internal operational budget planning process where we would look at balancing a budget. I think that's absolutely part of the story. I think the other part of the story is that districts statewide are looking at using the four-year forecast to design legislative priorities. And so certainly, as a district, we have some recommended legislative priorities that we would like the board to consider. So we'll be bringing those to you this fall in terms of where we would like to see our legislative focus be in moving the needle around where we see some fixes and some focus of our legislators around those fixes.
And then if I heard right, the salary contribution for all four years is about whatever the acronym you use, but it's approximately 2% each year.
Correct.
Over the 2017-18 budget.
2018-19 budget.
Is that the state?
Oh, sorry.
Is the 2018-19 budget 2% over the 17-18 budget?
It's 1.9%.
1.9, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And is that the state allocated raise every year, or is that above and beyond, the 1.9%?
Our apportionment around all of our different funds goes up by the IPD every year, which is 1.9%.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for the presentation. I think my main question or concern would be around that it's at the state funding and all the changes that have occurred this year, and knowing, asking if we're fairly confident in the projections, the numbers, the information we've been provided by the legislature is that, do we have enough to feel confident in our projections? Or is there still some, some question marks out there where we're a little bit hesitant to make certain assumptions or certain planning, and we need to get a little bit more clarification or finality from the legislature? Does that make sense?
So I'm going to, I'm going to take a shot at answering the question this way, Kevin, and then you jump in. I think we're, we're confident in our 18-19 budget because that process is one that we know. And we, for decades and decades, schools and school superintendents and boards have planned in a very similar way to 18-19. This whole concept of a four-year forecast is brand-new to all of us. And so, you know, while we've, we have met the rules and compliance of having to do a four-year forecast, I don't think any of us can anticipate what does that really mean for districts, because we have never done it before. So I think, you know, as you start to kind of look out beyond years two, three, and four, it starts to get more and more uncertain. So I think we feel very confident around our numbers in 18-19, and then all of us will be learning along the way, and that is true for every district, all 295 across the state. This whole idea of a four-year forecast is brand-new to all of us. And so I think that's where, it's, it's not even about our learning, it's about what does this mean in terms of school district operation, et cetera, et cetera, because it's not a mechanism that we've, we've had to, to kind of, we haven't ever had to navigate this before.
Correct.
Would you add anything to that?
But as you said, I mean, it's, it's a learning process for us, even to the point where, as we've gone through this, back in May, I know I was told the board didn't have to approve the four-year forecast, and as we were going through it yesterday, the board now has to approve the four-year forecast. Well, that's not what was directed in May. And so as, you know, as the state goes through this process, I can foresee some changes coming along the way, say, oh, well, you need to do this now, because it's new to everybody. So when something's new, they don't know what they're asking for.
And even to kind of underline that or underscore, we still have some, like, legal counsel, internal legal counsel still has some questions about what the law actually says versus how it's being interpreted around the requirement of board approval for the four-year forecast. So initially, it was an acknowledgement that there's a four-year forecast, and this is what it is, and then it evolved into now it's a, it's, the board has to approve that. Our internal legal counsel is reading the law, saying, I have some questions about that. So even kind of how that evolves over time is a question mark, so.
Are, are we saying that we, if we do need to approve the four-year forecast, we need to do it in a couple weeks?
Correct.
And is, is what you sent us, what you would ask us to approve?
Correct.
Something that doesn't look sustainable?
Correct.
Okay. More to come. Thank you.
So what you're approving is the forecast. You're not saying we're going to support and/or approve a budget that would allow district operations to be in the negative. So you're just approving that, yes, we acknowledge that this is what our four-year forecast looks like. We acknowledge that you, the enrollment number, you know, you've used X enrollment number over the four years.
Yeah, one of my concerns about the forecasting too, and again, like you said, there, it's not tying anything, but our enrollment forecasts are always, you know, not aggressive enough. I mean, we try to be conservative, but we've always just blown out of the water. Any forecast that of slowing down with growth, it just never has happened yet, and I don't think it's going to in the future. So that would be my main concern about approving that forecast. I don't think it's aggressive enough for projection of our enrollment.
Sure. So, so we can talk about that a little bit, and again, Kevin, you jump in here if I start wandering into bad lighting. But, so when you're talking about forecasting enrollment, there's a couple different purposes for doing that. So when you're forecasting enrollment for facilities planning. So when you're forecasting enrollment for facilities planning, you want to be a little more aggressive so that you have space for kids. When you're forecasting enrollment for the purposes of budgeting, there's a risk in being too aggressive. If you, if you inflate your enrollment too high and budget on that, and then those kids don't show up, you won't actually receive that money. So you've basically budgeted, and then you're not getting the dollars. It's almost like you're anticipating a raise, and then you don't get it, but you've already, like, expended your personal budget to incorporate the raise, but then you don't get it.
They already bought a new car.
So it, I hear what you're saying, it's just there's two different purposes, and so, you know, the practice around enrollment forecasting for budgeting purpose is to be more conservative, because if you get dollars you weren't anticipating, you can always assign those into the budget in a way that supports your district priorities. If you've already kind of relying on those dollars and then you don't get them, you know, that requires you to go back in and cut dollars. So it, it's just two different purposes.
Right, so that, my point was that that may play and do a little bit of what Mr. Lerman's nervous about, you know, because the numbers are, they're different purposes, and that makes the numbers difficult to look at and assess, but, but I understand we have to do it, so.
And we understand that.
My other question, and maybe Ms. Whitney or Mr. Bolz can answer this, I, you know, we've, in the last couple of years, we've moved to kind of the, this GFOA priorities and trying to use that to influence our budgeting and kind of aligning more, more intentionally budgeting with the priorities and kind of getting the most bank for our buck, you know, if, in our expenditures. So I'm just curious if you can share any examples or, of how this, that process of using those principles has informed or influenced anything specific in the budgeting for the next school year?
Sure. So we used to, in the budgeting process, have a dollar value and say, okay, this is how much money we have, how do we want to spend it? Right? That's how we used to start the conversation. Now we put the outrageous outcomes up and say, these are our outcomes, here are the priority, the district priorities that we believe are going to move the needle toward those outcomes, and then we assign dollars. So it's almost the exact reverse of the way we used to start conversation. It has also, what we have also done is we have what are called initiative planning tools that require any district staff who is requesting dollars for a priority initiative to thoughtfully and intentionally align that priority with the outrageous outcomes and provide that rationale to leadership council as part of the budget planning process. So there's really thoughtful dialogue and conversation and tools that support that decision-making so that we're consistent in leadership council in the way that we consider the initiatives, the information that we consider as part of that process, and then the approval process. And that is all very specific and intentional and all brand-new within the last two years. So it has, it has really kind of turned the needle in term, up in terms of intentionality and focus in the way that we talk about budget dollars. So, you know, another anecdotal example is last week, we're in leadership council retreat, we were doing some action planning around our key priorities, and, you know, there's the, okay, here are the tasks that need to happen, here's going to do it, here's what outrageous outcome it attaches to, and here's the dollars that we would expect to spend. So there's just a level of detail around those conversations that we're having now since we started focusing on the GFOA framework that is different than in the past.
Right.
I don't, okay.
Are there any more questions? Well, I want to welcome all of our new student representatives. I didn't do that at the beginning of this study session, so welcome. We love having you here, and we're excited to have your swearing-in later. So we are going to break now for, for a break, and we will be back here at six-thirty.